On Southside Action Plan, the second part, specifically on the fairgrounds. The Southside Action Plan, which is shown on the screen on the map, is an area primarily focused on the south and southwestern part of the community. It's about 14,323 acres. Eighty-one percent of that is within incorporated city limits. Nineteen percent is unincorporated Leon County. And as you may recall, from going through the process of adopting the plan and adopting the amendments to the comprehensive plan, really the goal of the Southside Action Plan is to promote beautification, investment, and citizen engagement in this part of the The Southside Action Plan was initiated in January 2021 to update what was at the time called the Southern Strategy Area. That was objectives and policies in the comp plan that were originally adopted in 1998 and had become quite out of date. And so, the Southside Action Plan effort was an effort to update those objectives and In June of last year, we brought forward a status update on the Southside Action Plan, and that item highlighted over $1.13 billion of investment going into the South Side. Those investments range from infrastructure investments, affordable housing projects, as well as commercial development. And we attached that status report to the materials for this workshop item, but again highlighting that $1.13 billion of investment in the Southside Action Plan area. At that time, this board accepted the status report on the Southside Action Plan, but asked for six things to come back in a workshop format. It is, you know, how do we incentivize development? How do we implement infrastructure expansion, specifically sewer service expansion? How do we, as a community, mitigate gentrification and protect neighborhoods? How do we expand affordable housing options? How do we extend transit into unincorporated areas? The question specifically at that last meeting was looking at transit to Woodville. And then finally, a status update on the Fairgrounds' master plan, with the ability for the Fair Association members who are here to provide comment if you have questions on that as well. I'll hit each of these fairly quickly. I'm happy to go into more detail, but the agenda materials really go into detail on each of those six topics. So the first one is how Leon County incentivizes development. Really, this starts with the comprehensive plan. We just talked about that for a while, so I'll kind of leave it at that. Other than, the comprehensive plan looks at densities and intensities, what uses are allowed where, and then with the urban services area, has a mechanism by which we plan out future infrastructure investments to support that growth. When we get into the land development code, and again, that's the much more detailed land development regulations, we see a number of incentives for development. Across the entire county, there are incentives for redevelopment, and that's looking at allowing more flexibility in the site design to support the redevelopment of already-developed properties. And then we have the Grace Program, which also allows some flexibilities, particularly with the landscaping standards. This board in November of 2023 also passed an ordinance that made it much easier to implement accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, sometimes called granny flats. That really goes a long way to increasing the diversity of housing, which we just talked about in the last workshop, but also incentivizing development by removing some of the barriers that were in place to doing that. And then specifically to the Southside Action Plan area, there's incentives for development that streamline the development review process. So it makes much easier to get through that review process within the Southside Action Plan area. The second topic, the expansion of sewer into other parts of unincorporated Leon County. There was an item that came back in February of last year that highlighted this, kind of recapped that agenda item. Really, there's three ways in which we implement sewer service expansions. The first is primarily with the City of Tallahassee and their master sewer plan, and they plan out infrastructure investments and expansions and replacements and repair. That's, you know, an example of that would be the expansion of the sewer service into that southern triangle area on the south side of the community, which will connect 203 properties to central water and sewer. The next way we do that is the septic-to-sewer projects. I have a few more slides on that that I'll cover in more detail. And then finally, the third way we expand sewer service is through private development. So as development happens, the developer of property is responsible for installing those lines as long as they have access to sewer. So that's why things like the septic-to-sewer conversions, which extend sewer service, are so important, because then it allows more areas to actually connect into those lines. With regards to the septic-to-sewer conversions, Leon County has had tremendous success in this area, looking at places that have been served traditionally by septic tanks, and really converting those over into having sewer connectivity. The Woodville Heights and Anna Wood Bel Air Phase 1 is complete. Phase 2 also complete. The North East Lake Munson Project is very close to being complete, is near completion. And the Woodville Sewer Project Phase 1 is currently under construction. And when you add up these projects, we'll have sewer service to 709 homes that are currently served by septic within the primary springs protection zone. So this is a benefit for being able to do development, but also a huge benefit to the environment. So most of us would call that a win-win. When we look at the future, there are $18.1 million allocated by the county and the Department of Environmental Protection for the construction of the next phase of Woodville. This all together totals over $63 million of investment in this effort. And when we look at what this will do, the next three phases of the Woodville Sewer Project will provide sewer connectivity to 819 lots. So we're connecting a lot of people to sewer service, and we're doing it in a way that has no cost to the individual property owners, because we've received grant funds to help cover that, and through the Connect to Protect program, we save $13,000 for each individual homeowner. The next topic, looking at Leon County and how we mitigate gentrification and protect neighborhoods. Typically, when we talk about gentrification, we're really looking at a situation where wealth enters an area, and then you have one of, or more of, three different results that come out of that. Either the character of the area changes, either the benefits are not shared equitably by the people who live there, and/or existing residents are displaced. And, you know, those are three things that we work really hard to try to prevent or to mitigate the impacts of. One of those, and this is kind of one of those things where you may think, oh, we're investing $1.13 million in the South Side, surely that might drive gentrification. In fact, by doing public investments, we often protect against gentrification because of those public investments. The reason for that is, what we see is, when there's a lack of public investment, we see depressed property values. We see a lot of the negative things that happen with property values going down, increases of crime, kind of just an overall decline of the aesthetics of the area. And so, by making these public investments, we're helping to keep property values stable, which really prevents someone from being able to come in and acquire large numbers of property, completely redevelopment, displacing the current residents. So the public investment is a very strong tool for mitigating and preventing gentrification. We also do this through land planning. Again, we talked about the comprehensive plan ad nauseam a little bit earlier, but by having a plan for what can happen in an area, you can avoid the character of an area changing or displacing residents. An example of that would be if we had a neighborhood of single-family homes, you know, if we were to, like, dramatically upzone that and say, okay, we're going from, you know, one unit, or six units an acre, to 175 units an acre, that allows that area to change dramatically very quickly, which may have the unintended consequence of displacing current residents or changing the character of the area. But typically, what we see is, we would allow more incremental type of change. So if you're a neighborhood that allows single-family homes, we may then start allowing duplexes or triplexes, and not something so dramatic all at once. There may be times where you want to do that. You know, we talked about in the workshop, having that step analysis, the strengthen, transform, enhance, protect. You know, if we're talking about protecting, or preserving, or strengthening, or enhancing an area, that's, you know, we would take the more incremental approach. If we look at transforming an area, and I think a good example of that would be Gaines Street, there are times where you may want to do that, but when we look at, on the South Side, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about incremental change, allowing people to get wealth from their property without dramatically changing the character of the area or displacing the residents. With the land use planning, we're looking at transportation planning as well. And so, you know, the more affordable transportation options that are available, the easier it is for people to stay in their homes, because they're not spending as much money on transportation. So the more walkable an area is, the access to transit, those kind of things make life a little bit more affordable for people. And that's why we do very proactive transportation planning that ties with that land use planning. Again, not to reiterate too much what I talked about at the last workshop. Placemaking, you know, we have several placemaking efforts that have occurred both in the city and county. There's the Bond Neighborhood First Plan and plans like that. We're talking about doing a sense-place plan in Woodville, looking forward to that effort. We've done one in Micasuki. I know that's not the South Side, but that's an example of a placemaking plan. Really, what these do are help identify and build on the character of an area, which really helps keep that character from changing too dramatically. I mentioned part of the concern with gentrification is wealth entering an area, and the people who live there not experiencing the benefit of that wealth, or at least not experiencing it in an equitable kind of way. So our efforts, especially with the Office of Economic Vitality, on diversity and economic inclusion, really work towards that. So we very intentionally have minority and women's small business enterprise programs so that the people who live in the area also benefit from those public projects that are happening, so that we have resources available to people who want to start businesses or access the resources to support their business. And so, we're trying really hard to make sure that the people who live in an area benefit from the investment in that area. And then finally, when we want to prevent displacement, and I'll talk about this more in a moment, expanding affordable housing options and having resources for homeowners to make repairs or rehabilitation of their home helps them stay in their homes. So I know that was a lot really quickly. The agenda item does kind of go into each of those a little bit more detail, but for the sake of time, those are many, many ways that we, as a county, are working to mitigate those impacts of gentrification and protect existing neighborhoods. Mentioned affordable housing. How do we expand affordable housing options? The first way is directly investing in affordable housing projects. A good example of that is the county's direct investment in Columbia Gardens. There's also housing policy that you, as a board, have considered and approved. Those range from incentives for affordable housing to creating those programs that I mentioned, that are available to homeowners to help make emergency repairs to their home, to rehabilitate their existing home, so they can stay in those homes. And then finally, we always look for innovative solutions. A really good example of that is this board approved the plan unit development, the PUD for the dwellings, which is a tiny home community. I actually have the number of homes. Currently, 130 tiny homes that are attainable, housing for people. This board also recently approved an amendment to that PUD, which will allow 200 multifamily units to supplement those tiny homes. Again, these are attainable housing options, and something really creative, because we don't see tiny home communities anywhere else, really, especially ones that serve as this attainable housing. So, again, directly investing in affordable housing, passing housing policy, and supporting these innovative solutions are ways that Leon County expands affordable housing options. With transit, we reached out to Star Metro and talked to them specifically. They indicated that, at this time, their current focus is working to improve their existing routes and optimize that. But should they consider route expansions in the future, they have a process by which they would go to do that. They would look at what is the closest existing route. So if we're looking at something to Woodville, it's the route in purple on the bottom of the map. What is the ridership of that existing route? And then they would look at the densities and intensities of the area that would be served by the expanded transit route. So, you know, how many people are potential riders? Would you be connecting to employment centers and activity centers and things like that? And they would use all of this to basically determine what the startup costs are and what the ongoing operational costs are, and then they would do an analysis and kind of make a determination of what that route would look like, if it is a feasible route to do. At this point, I'll hand it over to Autumn Calder to give a status update on the fairgrounds, but we're happy to answer questions on that segment once she's done with that, as well as any of these other topics. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm happy to provide a presentation for you today. Thanks, Arti, for kicking it off. So, within the Southside Action Plan is the over 100-acre Fairgrounds property. It's a cornerstone of the South Side. Long before it was a blueprint project, the Board of County Commissioners prioritized the redevelopment of the site and completed several studies to prepare for the $30 million investment that the Blueprint project will make into this property. Today, I'll provide a quick update on the Blueprint Fairgrounds project, and this workshop item seeks the Board of County Commissioners approval on key steps to keep the Blueprint project moving forward. Also, as Arti mentioned, Rachel Pianta and Shonda Knight are here representing the Fair Association board. And I think, Ms. Pianta, you're the chair of the board right now, currently. Thank you for coming today. So first, just a quick recap of the property. Leon County owns 119 acres, which includes the 107-acre acre area that's leased by the North Florida Fair Association, and that is outlined in yellow. You also own the land under Gene Cox Stadium and the Leon County Extension Office that's on the corner of Xyla and Paul Russell Road. And we'll discuss the existing leases and agreements on the next slide. The primary area that's used by the Fair Association for the majority of the year is the 32-acre Midway area that's outlined in red. However, during two to three weeks in November, during the annual fair, the entire western and central area is utilized. As you can see, parking and Capitol Park take up a portion of the site, and then there are some unused areas of that 107-acre area that's unused. The master planning process that Blueprint completed last year identified opportunities to consolidate some of these existing uses and take advantage of the underutilized portions of the site. So the property is encumbered by four leases or agreements. The yellow block represents the eight acres that are leased to the Leon County School Board, and that lease ends in 2029. Purple block is a nine-acre parking agreement between Leon County Schools and the North Florida Fair Association. The green blocks are the Capitol Park, and that's under an agreement between Leon County and the City of Tallahassee. And then, the 107-acre land lease to the North Florida Fair Association is outlined in red. In order for the Blueprint project to break ground, these leases and agreements will need to be amended. Today, option number two recommends that the Board of County Commissioners authorize Leon County staff to begin to renegotiate the lease with the Fair Association. Currently, the future land use map designation in the comprehensive plan for the Fairgrounds property is split between recreation and open space and government operational. And staff is recommending a comprehensive plan amendment be initiated to ensure that the proper land use designations are in place to allow for the Blueprint project implementation and any potential future development. This recommendation is reflected in your option number three. Over the last five years, the IA Board has provided key direction to continue to move the Blueprint project forward. In 2021, the IA Board accepted the Market Feasibility Assessment and Alternative Site Analysis Report, which presented a recommendation to keep the Fairgrounds' uses on the site, given the cost to relocate the fair to a comparable site with comparable facilities. And just as a reminder, that cost in 2021 was between $25 and $30 million for that relocation. Big action in 2023, the project budget was increased from $12 million to that $30 million. And in 2024, the master plan for the Blueprint project was accepted, and then the project moved into our current phase, which is design. So, design will implement the master plan, and the master plan is a visionary plan of action that provides immediate benefits for the community, but also for the North Florida Fair Association. The improvements prepare the site for the long-term development and investment that's targeted for the South Side. Specifically, the Blueprint improvements that would be made in that $30 million investment include a new multipurpose pavilion, public green spaces and recreational facilities, infrastructure and utilities, and site preparation for future development, making the property an attractive area to invest. The design process will refine the site layout and involve input from the Fair Association throughout. In fact, the design process will continue the substantial engagement that we've had with the Fair Association for the last four years. To date, we've had over 20 meetings with their executive director and their board members. Blueprint staff provided frequent status updates through their executive director and presented to the full fair board five times between 2021 and 2024. As part of the master plan development, we reached out to each fair board member to have individual meetings to identify their goals for the future development of the site and how the development of the site interacts with the fair's operations. And we met with those that were willing to meet with us. Following acceptance of the master plan by the IA Board, Blueprint staff attended the fair board meeting in April of 2024. So after the IA Board approved the master plan, we then met with the fair board to discuss next steps. Following that meeting, you may remember, fair board members reached out to you, Board of County Commissioners, as well as Blueprint staff, regarding fair operations and making sure that their operations would be able to continue, given the implementation of the master plan and the Blueprint project. The primary concerns that they listed were storage areas for fair equipment, livestock event space, parking, and the phasing of the construction of the master plan elements and how that interacts with their activities. In order to address the Fair Association's concerns, Blueprint met with the executive director and staff onsite multiple times throughout the summer, but also during the annual fair in November, to discuss the operations and just witness how the land is used by the fair during the North Florida Fair. Based on the coordination and collaboration, Blueprint committed to providing 2,000 parking spaces, the continued flexible use of parking areas, and providing safe internal connectivity for all users and users, safely accommodating existing agricultural uses, as well as any new regional events that may occur, by locating those uses at least 50 feet away from designated food vendor areas, maintaining at least 20,000 square feet of storage and space for a maintenance shop, and that phasing would be addressed through the lease negotiations. However, advanced coordination with the Fair Association would occur prior to Blueprint infrastructure improvements to mitigate any impacts to their existing events and operations. We recently completed the scope and fee negotiations with the design team and anticipate beginning the design work before the end of March. One of the first tasks of that design work will be to introduce the design team to the Fair Association board and staff. We want to ensure that we continue that positive working relationship with them to make sure that the improvements that Blueprint builds reflect both the needs of the fair and the vision for the redevelopment of this cornerstone of our South Side. Thank you.
Commissioners, we have three recommended actions today. The first one is to accept the status report on the Southside Action Plan. That's primarily those five topics that I talked about. And then, as Autumn mentioned, option two and option three, specifically for the fairgrounds, would direct staff to work on lease negotiations with the Fair Association and to initiate the comprehensive plan amendment, which we actually see kind of rolling into that land use element update process. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Arti. Commissioners, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got a motion for staff recommendation in a second. In a second, from Commissioner Command. We're in discussion. Who would like to go? Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm excited by the presentation today. And one of the things which Attachment 6 indicates to us, it gives us a chronology, history of the Fair Association from 1941 down to 2000. And I appreciate the Fair Association's leadership being present. Shout out and kudos to Mr. Harvey for his years of dedication. And also to express the wonderful stately manner with which he has interpreted, listened to, translated, and been that person representing the Fair Association and listened to the county commission and all the other... I'm surprised Mr. Harvey's not here today, but typically, when we're talking about this issue, he would be in the room. One of the things that stands out, commissioners, is the history of support over time, that this board, dating back to the 1940s, not only our board, but also the City of Tallahassee's support, like, school board support, the Florida Department of Agriculture's support. And just over the years, there's been a consistent collaboration of public stakeholders supporting the activities of this association. The consistency of that history is compelling, and it makes sense that the public investment from various public entities bring us to the point today of a commitment that the Blueprint, which represents the city again, the county again, and the public's dollars, coinciding with a vision to contemporize the fairground. It's just, you can't look at these pages and not know that what we're contemplating is not consistent with history herself. And this is why this forward march, this onward progression of this piece of dirt, I think I heard 107 acres, 19 acres, and all of that, is something that we've been doing. But the great thing about this moment is that probably for the first time, there is a concerted voice among us through Blueprint that is beckoning us forward and is probably putting forward the most significant investment ever. And that culminating over time, that we see the vision splendid, that now is an opportunity to lift the site higher than just the yearly, year after year, y'all gonna put $2 in, what y'all gonna do? Y'all gonna give $15? I see something emerging, and I am complimentary to those of us who see also something emerging, that the site taking on more significance and the dollar value with which we see this land and its activities over time, its value to our community. And, Ms. Reminer, you could appreciate, with the exception of the times that Family High Football Team went out there and beat down a lot of football teams, most people have gone out there and felt pretty good leaving. But I know God, they got a whipping down at the fairground, at the stadium, and we took a whipping from Ricketts one time. We left feeling kind of bad. But both times you go to the fairground site, you leave with a good feeling. And this area is rich, and it has, over time, cultivated good feelings. And I believe that we, in the continuation of those codes... And I believe that we, in the continuation of those cogent minds who are coming together, who have labored as to what and how we magnify and amplify those good feelings, that's what we've been doing. And I commend Ms. Caldwell, her team, the Fair Association. And I'm so excited that the county attorney's looking at me funny. And county attorney, I had a bet that I wasn't gonna see anything today, and I think I've lost that bet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And anybody else? Commissioner Miner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just, I want to thank the work of our staff on both the South Side Action Plan as well as the fairgrounds. A lot of work's going into this and look forward to see what's coming up in the coming months. Also, about three years ago, I met with members of the Fair Association Board, and Jody, my chief of staff, and I met with them, and they were telling us some things that we had to consider during the whole process for the master plan for the fairgrounds. And one thing that really stuck out for me was they pointed out that we don't want to have the livestock pens next to food concession. Pigsty's and food service do not mix.
Look, you don't eat ham?
I just, I want a little separation there, you know?
Okay.
And that, you know, when I heard that, I'm like, you know, I hadn't thought of that, but that makes perfect sense. We need to listen to these people. And, but suffice to say, our staff had already been talking with them and had been, as you saw on the slide, have met with them 20 times over the last several, two or three years. So, want to thank the Fair Association Board for providing their input. Some of it was very important, and all of it was very important, and I want to thank the staff for working very closely with the Fair Association on that input. And then also, I want to thank you, Commissioner Proctor. When I first got elected about six years ago, I think at every meeting, you were talking about the fairgrounds.
You've only been here six years.
I'm a baby. I'm a baby. But you always talk about the fairgrounds and what we need to do for the fairgrounds, and that persistence has paid off. And so I just want to, you know, offer kudos to you because we're seeing it happen.
Hard work right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioners, anybody else? Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is exciting, and I also want to thank Commissioner Proctor and congratulate Commissioner Proctor because even though I'm also a little newer than Commissioner Miner to this, one thing that becomes very clear for anyone who starts paying attention to local politics is that Commissioner Proctor is fighting for the fairgrounds, period. And so this is in no small part due to you. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice. And so, as it gets built, I'd like to see what we can do to make sure when the Fair comes to town, they don't bring all the rusty equipment. We get all brand-new rides for this fancy new fairground. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox, you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First things first, as everybody, everyone else has already done, congratulations, Commissioner Proctor. When I first was elected to the county commissioner, the first thing I heard from Commissioner Proctor on this dais was that he wanted the fairgrounds to have indoor restrooms, and he wanted the fairgrounds improved. And here we are, Commissioner Proctor, some 15 years later, brother, you finally getting what you wanted. You know, what shocked me when I was looking at the analysis was, when you think about the fairgrounds, you just think about the fairgrounds. It shocked me that it covered Capital Park, it covered the stadium that the school board's using, that parking lot, it covered our extension office, and just the potential that it had even for future amenities to go out there. I'm proud of what we're gonna do on the fairgrounds and that we have the agreement from our partners, North Florida Fair, and what we're gonna do there. But I started looking at Capital Park and start thinking to myself, all that, all that tree cover, you got two fields out there, what else could we put out there, whether it be trails or, and I don't know if there is a trail out there, but whether it be trails or something else, there's just, there's just so much out there, so much potential for what could go out there, just, it really, really sparked my interest. So when I was thinking about, again, when I looked at it and noticed how big of a complex it is, it made me start thinking about what I brought up a while back with Commissioner Proctor and the potential of us looking at maybe renaming that. And I think, and this is a whole nother subject, but it's bigger than just the fairgrounds because I think when you think about, when you think about just the South Side in general, what Commissioner Proctor has done and fought for there, that whole complex, including Capital Field, including Extension Office, including the football stadium, the park, all of that, to me, is just, it's just a, 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 kudos, a tribute, what's gonna be done there to the leadership that you provided for the South Side and for that area of town and specifically for the fairgrounds. And so, shoot, I almost want to change the name of it because, I mean, it's more than just the fairground project. I mean, it's more than just the fairgrounds, it's a whole complex out there. I mean, it covers so much land that, and it has so much of an impact. When you think about the park and the impact it has on the children and all the trade shows and everything that comes to the, to the fairgrounds, then you think about the football stadium and the games that have been there, and the extension office and what it provides for our community, it gives an all-around view of the potential of that site. But again, I go back to, it also gives a breadth of credence to Commissioner Proctor and what he's done for our community, and I can't think of a better place or a better, a better thought than to have all of that encompassed by a man who's been here by the end of his tenure for 30 years. So congratulations, Commissioner Proctor, and again, I appreciate the partnership from the Fair Association, Leon County School Board, and other partners that are willing to work with us as we go down this road. And finally, last but not least, staff, I think you've done an amazing job of including all of our partners and stakeholders in this, those multiple meetings that you've had with the associations. I'm sure you've also met with the school board. That kind of collaboration is what Leon County's been known for, and I appreciate you guys doing, putting all in, and putting in all that work and doing all you've done to make sure that all of our stakeholders are at the table. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Command, nothing?
Mr. Chair, on that, I'd like to just say-
Go ahead.
-school board, Mr. Chairman, that the school buses are parked there in the parking lot of the stadium, and not one time, Rachel is, but when we have the food giveaways, the school board has always moved, I don't know, 50, 70, 80 buses offsite so that we can have the food giveaways in that parking lot on Saturday mornings and are either coming down Main Street or the fair, which we've come and then turned to exit onto Paul Russell. The corporation always is just exquisite. And each year, in August, I have attempted over the years to host a community kickoff and a dinner for whosoever will attend. And I don't know how many we've done, but the community has supported it, and we've come to that site. And then a final story, Fair Association. We had a hurricane that was coming a few years ago, and I think it was FEMA events, if you remember, came. And I came out there that morning, they were coming in, and so many 18-wheel trucks with cots and relief and this. And, but I had to go to university and teach a little bit, and that afternoon I came back, and FEMA had disappeared, and they were gonna set up. And it was, what happened? And FEMA left a centrally-located property where they were setting up, anticipating the storm and would direct its operations, and they moved to Lawson Gym. And went to the Lawson Gym because the fairground was appropriately located, but its buildings could not withstand, I believe, 70 miles an hour winds. You remember that, Vince? So, because the building could only take 70 mile winds, FEMA set up someplace else. Secondly, the technology capacity, they couldn't fire up their computers and stuff like that, so they had to move. That was heart-wrenching. I knew we needed to do a change. We had to have that property brought up, and that was one of the most heart-wrenching disappointments that our house was not good enough for our federal government to come and help save and give relief and direction to our community. And we just couldn't have a property that was that non-functional nor compatible to the technological needs and being a headquarters for storm relief and all of that. And that was a real pivotal moment that sunk deep in my heart. And I thank this commission for your patience as I talk about restroom issues from time to time. I thank you all for walking with us, and thank you all too. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I would just close by saying I was 18 years old when you was elected to this body, and I was living in another state, and I knew you wanted to get the fairgrounds fixed up too somehow, man. It was like psychic, man, it was in the air. Autumn, I did have a real quick question on the comment that Commissioner Proctor made about LCS's cooperation with us. Are any enhancements being considered for Cox Stadium as a part of the master plan?
We developed the master plan knowing that Cox Stadium is a significant part of the fairgrounds' property and that no master plan would be sufficient if it didn't take into account Gene Cox Stadium. The funding that we have set aside does not include improvements to Gene Cox Stadium itself. However, we're ready to integrate the master plan improvements that are around Gene Cox Stadium to any development plans that they may have in the future.
Thank you, Autumn. Commissioner Proctor, I think that might be the next, you know, hill you want to climb is maybe, you know, seeing that since the county owns the land underneath the stadium and LCS is a partner to us, you know, what can we do over a long-term planning strategy to help them enhance Gene Cox Stadium, considering especially the contributions that they've made hosting FHSA tournaments to our tourism and the fact that they are a centerpiece of the facility there at the fairgrounds that Commissioner Maddox was talking about. So I would be willing to, you know, help you with that if that's something we want to do.
Thank you for all that overture. I must admit that within my left eye, there's a twinkle, and I see the sunset of my career in my left eye. And I'm likely going to defer to Commissioner Maddox to do the heavy lifting on that stadium piece. And he's talked about that. He has a vision. He stopped talking, but he started talking about it for what we could do on Highway 27 with the landfill, and he's spoken about it for years. And I don't know why he stopped talking about it, but I would like permission of this board, maybe for all of us to take a trip up to Memphis in prior to COVID. Memphis has done some exciting things around the stadium and sports that generate income and all of that. And I'd like to, for us to maybe take that road trip together to look at that. But I think that, Commissioner Maddox, I don't know what happened to you, but I've tried to lift this subject about the bathrooms, and it's been a little minute. The stadium part, I'm gonna let somebody else worry about.
Commissioner Maddox?
On point to that, when we were talking about the master plan for, when we originally started having a conversation about the master plan for the fairground complex and area, one of the thoughts was, how do we create a sports complex around it? And Gene Cox was a, was a big part of that conversation of how do we make the upgrades to it to make it, to make it even more marketable for us to get state championships here and future, our future opportunities for us to have it. I think that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Autumn, but the monies that are, that are being allocated towards the fairground is being spent mostly on infrastructure so that it would be ready for a group that wants to come in and build a sports complex of sorts, or if, if we were able to find money or if we were able to partner with LCS to make improvements to the stadium, that, that all the infrastructure that would be in place, that those, that those improvements could be made. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, there's really two approaches to the $30 million. One approach is to provide something that the community and the Fair Association can use today. That's the pavilion, that's restroom upgrades, that's walking trails, and that's improvements to Capital Park because part of that strategy is to consolidate, move one of the fields for Capital Park to open up some new space for some development to occur. Okay, that's happening. And at the same time, there are dollars that are being invested that will set the fairgrounds up to be ready for investment that can come in the future. So that's where we're talking about some of the not-so-exciting stuff, but really important like stormwater ponds, underground infrastructure from power, water, sanitary sewer. So getting all of that stuff through the Blueprint project will make pad-ready sites for future redevelopment. And it's up to this board to determine what that future development could be. I know that you've looked at, over the years, you've looked at recreational indoor facilities, basketball, volleyball, events like that. We've also looked at, talked about conference centers and meeting spaces. So it all kind of depends on what this board, direction this board wants to take. But Blueprint's charge is to get those sites ready so that when you're presented with an opportunity, you can act.
Mr. Chair, to finish off my comments, I think Autumn or Vince or somebody was talking about that lease ends in '29 with LCS.
Yes.
LCS, correct?
Right.
As that lease ends, we need to start talking about what kind of improvements need to be made to the stadium and what the vision is long-term as we, as we renew the lease with LCS. And so, my question to Vince is, have we started those, Mr. Administrator, I'm sorry, have we started those conversations around building out that, that new lease or what that may look like, or when, what's the timeline on starting that conversation?
Mr. Administrator?
The short answer, Commissioner, and to echo a lot of what's been said, it's been a long time getting here, and upon your action today, we'll be prepared to start those lease negotiations. And as has been said, they will be very important for us to realize the full development and economic potential of the site.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, I think this is the right time for us to start having a conversation about what the long-term vision is for Cox Stadium from Leon County Schools and what kind of buy-in they will have and what kind of buy-in they would expect from us in those improvements as we do on the land. But a lot of improvement's been made by Leon County Schools to the land, and what other improvements would they like to see in order to make it the facility they would like to for our students and for other organizations who may want to use in the future? Because I do think it could be a part of the jewel out there that could possibly bring in some revenues in the future when there were tourism, kind of similar to what our cross-country field is doing. So I'll fight that battle with you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. You know, I've been there with you in agreement on that in terms of enhancing our facilities and doing what we can to entice some sports tourism. And we've got a proof of concept with ARP, and now we have another property that's ours that we're investing a lot of money in. I'd love to, you know, work together with this board. Commissioner Proctor, hopefully, I don't think you're going anywhere, man. You know, you got 30 more years in you. We'll get, we'll get something done. But I just wanted to reiterate thanking staff. We ended abruptly in the first workshop, but already thank you for all the work you guys put into the comp plan workshop and your efforts so far in getting us here. And thank you guys for your flexibility in letting us go over a little bit to get to this workshop on the South Side Action Plan. So y'all are, you know, obviously very important to the future of this community. Your skills, your intentionality is not unseen, and we appreciate it. I'm glad you're on our team. Rachel and Shonda, thank you for showing up. I'll note that Shonda and Autumn are fellow Leadership Tallahassee Class 36 classmates in line, so I gotta give them a shout out. Rachel, I'm sorry, I know you're Waculla County, but you missed that one, but you know. Oh, are you LT 31? Didn't you just start Leadership Waculla though as well?
No.
Oh, yeah, 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 but hey, listen, I'm sorry, I thought you had to live in the county, but I guess not. Hey, it's all good, it's all good. Thank you guys so much for taking the time to be here. We're gonna close out. Commissioner Proctor, you got something else?
I thought JaVale was a member of Leadership Tallahassee. What's your class? Seven?
Wow. LT seven? Hey, let's go, let's go. All right, Commissioners, anything else? Commissioner Command?
Mr. Chair, we're gonna do a commissary discussion after the-
Mr. Chair, are we going to do a Commissioner discussion after the vote on this item?
I did not anticipate that. Do we have that in this, on the workshop?
Yeah. This is a single subject?
Yeah, yeah, it's not. We got to stay germane to the subject.
Well, I thought this was a South Side Action Plan workshop.
It is, but I mean, if you can talk about whatever you want to talk about, it's just not going to be like formal Commissioner discussion. So if you got some, if you want to talk about the South Side Action Plan, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an item I'd like to discuss pertinent to the South Side Action Plan, but it's not related to this motion.
Well, if it's not related to this motion, then is it related to the South Side Action Plan?
It is. So the South Side Action Plan incorporates a large portion of southwest Leon County.
I mean, we can dispose of the motion if you want and then you can talk about, but there's no room for you to make any amendments or anything to this motion if that's what you want to do. Or I'm not really sure where you're getting, where you, like, if you want to talk about whatever you want to talk about, you can talk about it and it won't hurt this motion.
So in the South Side Action Plan, I have, I want to talk about Pentecole Street.
Okay, is Pentecole Street a part of the South Side Action Plan?
It's in the map of the South Side Action Plan.
There you go. Then you're good to talk about it.
Okay. So it's by the floor. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I want to talk, you know, last, I kind of want to rehash and kind of, if you walk with me, over the last year of us talking about Pentecole Street specifically. I believe it was last spring, we, during Commissioner Comment, discussed Pentecole Street and we had, there was a motion to direct staff to come back with a crime analysis of the 32304 ZIP code in the Pentecole Street corridor. And September of last fall, the item came back and we had a follow-up motion which passed unanimously to direct staff to come back with actionable items for us to discuss amongst the board. In our last meeting, we had a status report came back to us. And I voted to approve the status report because I wanted to discuss Pentecole Street in our South Side Action Plan, as it is part of the South Side Action Plan on the map. Since that last meeting, there was a double homicide on Pentecole Street, a shooting from Pentecole Street on Tallahassee State College's campus. And then last Friday night, there was another shooting off Mayberry Street, which is directly off of Pentecole Street. That's three shootings that we have had since the last conversation related to Pentecole From my understanding, and Mr. County Administrator, feel free to interrupt me if I'm wrong, the Big Bend Continuum of Care has created in 2025, 2005, not 2025, I apologize, a Pentecole Street corridor plan. Since 2005, there's been substantial change in growth in Leon County and other areas. The Carney Center was not present in 2005. The Pentecole Street corridor has changed. With that, I firmly believe that issues have changed, the crime has changed, and, you know, what we are seeing on a day-to-day basis has changed. My aide, Ally Richards, and she gave me permission to share this, on Saturday morning with her two young children in her car, driving on Pentecole Street in the middle of the day, saw a woman, bless her heart, who was nude from the waist down. And I say bless her heart because I imagine she was having some kind of mental health episode. And I think it's wrong for us as Commissioners to identify and know that there's a problem in us just to vote on status reports and not look at how do we engage in the problem and how do we improve in the solution? And I sit up here being completely honest and transparent with you all that, I don't have the solution, right? I think that this is something that takes more than just us. And so Commissioner Minor, in the workshop that we had before this, I completely agree with the sentiment that you had when you were referencing South Monroe Street and Care Point as far as like incentivizing businesses to want to enhance the looks of their building and the aesthetic of their building. But the fact of the matter is with Pentecole Street, I think that if I was a business owner, I would have a hard time coming and investing on Pentecole Street with some of the active issues that are going on and without, you know, seeing us as leadership looking to tackling these problems. And I commend you for the work that you've done on North Monroe Street. I've noticed a significant difference up there and I know that's been an important part of what you've done from your office the last few years. And I want us to kind of take some of that same approach with Pentecole Street. You know, the reason in fall of 2024, in that September meeting, I wanted actionable items is because, you know, I think we have a great staff. We have a highly decorated county administrator. And I think that if there's any, if there's any organization that could look at Pentecole Street and come up with a new corridor plan to tackle it, I think it's Leon County staff. And so I have an idea of potentially putting together a, some sort of community board with leadership, inviting leaders from Tallahassee State College, inviting leaders from Florida State University, from inviting leadership from our nonprofits, to potentially even getting leadership from our board and the city. Invite the sheriff. Invite the police chief. Get our community leaders together and let's talk about what the crime is, where's the problem? And I think we need to come up with a new Pentecole Street corridor plan. I think that by us sitting up here and just kind of pushing it down the road, we saw what's happened in the last two weeks. I mean, there's violent crime going on and part of the South Side Action Plan talked about sitting right here that we should be looking at improving the dollar amount and values of people's homes. Well, with violent crime and the issues that are going on in Pentecole Street, I would argue and say that it's, we're stopping folks from being able to build wealth for their self and their families. So I sit here humble enough to tell you, I don't have the solution, right? But I want us to find a solution. But I think that the start should be putting, directing staff or putting together a group to come up with a new Pentecole Street corridor plan. I'm prepared to make the motion or amend, include it to one of these options, but if it's okay with the chair, I would like to hear some, you know, feedback from my colleagues on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. I just don't know if we're in the right venue for that because this is a workshop on South Side Action. I don't know if that kind of action is appropriate in this venue. I don't know if it's, I'm not against your idea, I just think it might be better to come back as a Commissioner time item, but the county administrator or county attorney can clarify the posture, if we're in the right posture for something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't speak to the posture, I'll defer to chastity on that. Just one small technical error, and I don't disagree with anything Commissioner Caban said, I want to be clear about that. The, with the use of corridor plan, I think there was just a little confusion. It was referenced that the Big Bend Coalition of Care did the 2005 corridor plan. It was the City of Tallahassee's 2005 corridor plan. It's a, it's a planning document. And again, we were clear, when we came back last time, we were clear that from a master planning standpoint, and of course, planning's here, I could talk about that, that when we use the term master plan, we refer to the city's jurisdiction on master planning, given that just about the entire length is within the city limits. But the Big Bend Coalition of Care is undergoing a corridor plan currently and will be starting soon, Shaken to provide more details on that, which is a all-encompassing corridor plan to deal with a lot of the issues and the spillover issues that we're having related to homelessness in the area and that sort of thing. That issue's ongoing, we could talk more about that, but we're happy to receive any other direction that the board might have.
On point. Well, hold on, let me get county attorney, are we, from a posture standpoint, do we need to pass the three items that are recommended and then allow Commissioner Caban to offer this item or does he offer this as an amendment if he's asking for staff to come back with an item? What is the bright posture for us in this environment?
So if this is within the South Side, then it's certainly something that could be discussed and contemplated and voted on preliminarily by the board at this workshop, understanding that nothing that happens in this workshop is final until it's voted on at the next regular meeting, which would ratify anything that's discussed. So you could take up the three and then come back to this or you could combine it if you want. That's the discretion of the board.
I would say to Commissioner Vice Chair, there's like six, one half dozen of the other, if it has to be ratified at the next meeting before an item can come back anyway or a direction can be taken, you just wait till the next meeting and then perhaps in that time you can work with staff to better frame your request. And why, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't have a West Side Action Plan in and of itself. And there may be an issue with that as it might take away from the South Side Action Plan, I don't know. But that would be my thought on that. Commissioner Maddox, you're a real good procedural guy, what do you think?
Yeah. I think I brought this up last time. I think the problem that you ran into Commissioner Caban and the county administrator brushed over it a little bit, even the corridor plan that the Big Bend Continuum of Care is doing is in concert with the city because so much of that land is within city limits, or all of us is within city limits, that we can't, we can't, we could put together a corridor plan all we wanted to, but the city could say they're not going to do anything about it. If you look at what happened here, what we had today, when we talked about Commissioner Minor's idea of extending our comp plan stuff by three, four weeks, we said yes, the city said no, we'll do our process. As Commissioner, as the mayor said, the city will do theirs. I think the best way to try to get to where you're going is either, I'm sure that we'll have a mayor chair meeting this year with our, with our chair, have a mayor chair, or if you want it to be, and I don't know, I don't even know if the Continuum of Care has an appointment from commissions on that, on the corridor plan, planning committee, if you want to get involved in that corridor planning committee that's going to go back to the city for consideration. Because Vince, does it come back to us or is it going to the city?
Can you provide better detail on that?
It would come to both, Commissioner. This is Big Bend Continuum of Care's corridor plan specifically focused on homelessness. And they are actively working on that right now. They've been working with our planning team to identify specific zoning as well as properties that actually exist along the Pentecole Street corridor, as well as, and also building off that to also look at North Monroe Street and downtown Tallahassee.
Absolutely. Mr. Administrator, Mr. Chair, if I can, Shaken, it would have to be approved by both boards?
Well, what it will include in there is, it's there, it will include recommendations of how the county and the city can continue to work in those areas of addressing homelessness in those specific corridor areas. But those things can include what we're doing right now with investment in our host deputies, things like that, that currently we're ongoing doing, but also other opportunities in addressing issues regarding homelessness in those specific corridors.
But you also said it would include zoning and other potential changes to improve the areas, correct?
Well, not, not changes specifically for zoning, but identifying what those zonings are in those specific areas, but also potentially looking at to determine, okay, how do we better engage those individuals in those areas that are zoned either for commercial or residential?
Commissioner Caban, actually, now that I'm hearing about this plan, I think that's the way you work through this. I think if there's, when that comes back to us as a board, because it will have, it will have the zonings and all the other information that go on in that corridor within that, within the agenda item, correct?
Yes, but what it will do is specifically look at.
Homelessness.
Homelessness, yes. Homelessness, how do we engage homelessness and how we help in reducing homelessness as well as nuisance activities in those areas?
I just, Commissioner Caban, I agree with everything that you're saying. It is important, I think it's something that we need to look at, I think it's something that, that we need to focus on. Unfortunately, I'm not a city commissioner and the city has control over zoning, they have control over, over most anything. It's a state road, correct? It's a state road, so we don't even control the road. We can't even, we can't even make changes to the road if we wanted to. So if we could, some kind of way, work through the Continuum of Care corridor plan to make, to make recommendations or to give our input into that, that would actually also give our input to the city on some of the changes we like to see there. Because it talks about the zoning, if you think there's some change, things that the city, that you'd like for the city to contemplate, I think we could talk about in the auspices of that conversation because, you know, economic development and homelessness, if you, if you're dealing with homelessness, you're dealing with economic development too. I see a way for us to get to where you're trying to go. What I don't want to do is, I just don't want to go down this road of us creating a corridor plan and then the city looks at us and says to us, well, we're not doing any of it. Yeah, yeah, we like your idea, but we're not, we're not changing the zoning, we're not, we're not building more wider sidewalks, we're not doing bike lanes, we're not changing the traffic pattern on the road, you know, we're not, we're not sending more police officers down there. And then we would have done that work and then have to be fighting for the things that we've done. So that's the only suggestion I got. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the feedback, Commissioner Maddox. Here's where I think I'm at, is the crime that we are seeing is beyond homelessness, right? We're seeing murders, shootings. I think this is becoming larger than just nuisance activity or nuisance crime. You know, this is, we can only control what this board can control, right? And it is in city limits, but it's also in Leon County. And this is, I think, is a frustration sometimes that I have as a Leon County Commissioner and the way some things are set up is because, you know, we do defer to the city and the city does a great job at a lot of things. But I haven't seen much movement on this in quite some time. And I think that I'm not willing to continue to push this down the road when it's in my district and people are getting murdered and folks are driving down this corridor every single day and experiencing these issues. So, Mr. Chair, you know, I would like to see, it looks like other Commissioners want to speak on this, but I just want to hear some feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Caban. You're right on. I echo all your sentiments. And so first, it is, it is, just in all the locations you discussed, well within the South Side Action Plan. And it is not just homelessness. What it sounds like the concern is addressing crime and safety, which that would include and everything else. And so we have in front of us, the, thinking procedurally, we have in front of us the South Side Action Plan item to accept the status update. And if we want to change something, typically, we wouldn't accept the status update. If the entire board chose to change or direct something else, they would theoretically say, accept and direct staff to do XYZ to this plan, perhaps bring back changes that could address key issues with the future update in the plan that we're about here to accept a status update on. In a workshop, we do make decisions just like this, we just wait for them to be ratified at the next, at the commission meeting. So procedurally, this all makes sense to me for, I guess, at this juncture, a friendly or substitute amendment, but it's not my district and I'm just telling you where I stand. The, I also think the reason, the reason I wanted to say all that is because I don't think we should start accepting status updates when we have items we want to discuss in the, in the update. And so this is why I'm glad you brought this up and I'm glad you brought it up before we voted on just accepting this status update as a decision at this workshop that would be ratified theoretically at the next workshop. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor?
Chairman, I hear well and deeply what Commissioner Caban is asking. And as we look at the map of South Side Action Plan, over on Attachment 1, page 3 of 77, West Pentecole Street is the northernmost boundary there that comes all the way around the Bluntstown Highway. It's within. And certainly if we talk about today, the midway cotton candy and candy apples for the fairground, its future, its joy. But what Commissioner Caban is talking about, that little word that none of us like to, you know, use, but it's in the South Side and I'm not ashamed to use the word, we're really talking about mental health as an undercurrent that has consolidated in a geographic area that creates and fosters attention and is a triggering point for activities such as what he has described. The city commission to my awareness, nor the county commission to my... The city commission to my awareness, nor the county commission to my awareness, have we got into the 32304 thing deeply enough to talk about one of those identified elements of poverty is the, is the mental health dysfunction. I believe that Florida State, whom I have chided previous president, because 32304 is all around, I mean, you're an island within 32304. If we could bring this discussion before the university's stakeholders, because the health safety of students adjoining Ocala Road, all of those feeder roads, they come past, going to Tallahassee State College, you go past, you can't, you go past. It's the main corridor, it's the gateway between Florida State and Pensacola. And the companion street would be Tennessee Street. So if you didn't go Tennessee from Florida State up to Tallahassee State College, you would take Pensacola. And I'm not too proud, commissioners, to receive the request as a part of the future consideration and amplified look because we're seeing decay of human personality. And we can't sit here and talk about $30 million for fun and whether or not we separate the pigs from the food stand. And we don't separate fools from out the street. I just, we can't. So to reconcile what is the South Side, its people, its challenges, the multiplicity of need, I think we have to include it. And I would ask our, this body to be receptive to the realities that we would not put this under the rug. And in light of all the positive things, and just look how long it takes to get a bathroom for the fairground indoor. It may be one day before we leave, we may see one. But certainly, if we argue for bathrooms and that kind of infrastructure, in our very eyes, the deterioration of human existence, I think we can't ignore to include it. So be it a human services area, mental health, everybody else calls that crime, but it's poverty and it's playing out. And it's part of 32304's fabric. And it's something that the future is going to compel this body, future bodies, as well as the city commission and other stakeholders to pay attention. In particular, as long as the jail is there, the Shonda, and it provides overnight stay to people who can't afford other places. And the Kearney Center that provides overnight stay for people who can't afford it, affordable housing. And when you combine Leon County's detention center right across the street from the Kearney Center focusing on the homeless and people who don't leave far away from home base, which is home base to them. And what makes home is, I imagine, where you go to sleep at night and where you get food and change clothes. And that's pretty much what's occurring. And I think that this does deserve, Mr. Chairman, if not from a high intellectual place in our thought, but maybe from the compassionate chambers within our hearts, we can reconcile the inclusion of and the lifting up of Pensacola Street. And I would strongly receive that into the motion that I made of our acceptance of recommendations from staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And I'll give it back to you, Commissioner Caban, if you want to make a amendment. But I tend to agree with what I've heard from Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner O'Keefe. And Commissioner Caban, I, I said this at the last meeting, I agree with you that Pensacola Street is very important to our community. It's a, it's a gateway into hundreds of millions of dollars of improvements that are being made at FSU's football stadium and this area around that. I think that it's, we're not, although we are separate governments, you know, we do have joint planning in this community between the city and the county, maybe that's a conduit by which we can implore the city or the state or whoever to engage on this idea and work together to do something about it. So I, I understand your urgency and your frustration with the fact that jurisdictionally it may not be in your bailiwick, but something has to be done. And I think nothing ventured, nothing gained. So, and I think we've also established that you could amend this and it would be germane. So on that, I'll give it back to you. You can make a suggestion for an amendment to Commissioner Proctor's motion on staff recommendations, and then we can vote on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate the feedback from, from this board. But I was, my, I was thinking about this over the weekend of what I wanted to do. And what I would like to do is make a motion to create a Pensacola Street Corridor Advisory Board with appointed members, one representative from Tallahassee State College, one representative from Florida State University, one representative from the, the business committee on Pensacola Street, one representative from the Kearney Center, representative from the city of Tallahassee. And on it, quite frankly, I would like to have the chair or an at-large commissioner and myself. And I want to get all the stakeholders in one room, community leaders, and discuss these issues. That's my, that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a, a motion that's to amend the staff recommend, or Commissioner Proctor's motion. Do you accept that?
No, he's trying to augment.
Oh, okay, you're, you're starting over.
No, he's augmenting or adding to, supplement.
I'm adding, I was.
Supplemental.
I got you. So you're adding to the, you're adding like a fourth option?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And who is the second or, oh, we have to have a new, we got to dispense of the
So it sounds like a friendly amendment.
Right.
And the motion maker can decide if it's friendly.
Right, that's what I'm asking. Motion maker says it's, it's, he gave me some misdirection there. So is it, is it friendly?
Sure.
Who was the second?
Why only, Florida State is made up of thousands of people, why only one representative there? There got to be more than one person over there can help.
Yeah, yeah. County attorney might want to chime in on that.
I wouldn't limit it.
No, I am so sorry. I was just letting you know that Caban was the second.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I assume Caban's cooled in with this friendly amendment and the second. Sorry, back to you, Mr. Commissioner.
Y'all were just hopeful that we could add, there's a lot of PhDs and whatnot, urban planners. There's more than one person ought to be involved.
Listen, I'm trying to get the ball rolling, right? What I wanted to have is a representative because those are two staples on both sides of that corridor, right? And I think it would be good to have leadership on both sides and get stakeholders in that room. You know, that's, that's kind of where my brain is going with this.
Super.
No point, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, so I've said it six times between two meetings. We don't have jurisdiction on Pensacola Street. The city would have to be a partner in this for it to work. And it sounds like everybody's on, on board with us moving this direction. So I'll tell you what, I think the better idea, if you go the way you want to with it, how about we ask the city to have a joint workshop on Pensacola Street where we discuss all the issues that are going on Pensacola Street and how we might improve them, improve Pensacola Street, the actions that the city have taken on Pensacola Street to do that and what their future act, future anticipated actions are. We can have our, our county administrator talk about what we've done concerning crime. And in that meeting, if, in that meeting, we can all agree, then I think out of that meeting potentially comes the committee that is, is a joint city-county committee that would look at Pensacola Street and how we improve it. I just, look, if we put this committee together, our staff is going to staff it. And our staff has a lot of things to do. And this is by no means a waste of time. It's by no means a waste of time. This is something that we absolutely need to do. But it only becomes a waste of time when our staff does it and they put all this stuff together, we pick all these folks, these folks come to the table, they create all these plans, and then we realize that we can't implement any of it because we have to take it over to the city and the city has to agree. So before we even go down that road, we've done this before, Mr. Administrator, have we not? Where, and Commissioner Proctor, you've been here as well, where we've sent a invitation over to the city to have a conversation about an issue concerning our, Commissioner Minor, you too, we've sent a letter over to the city with, to have a conversation concerning something that's, that is germane to our, to our community because we are county commissioners. We should be concerned about these things. But also I have a healthy respect for jurisdiction. I cannot ask the state of Florida to, to respect our jurisdiction, to respect home rule, and then in the same breath say, I don't respect the city's jurisdiction and don't respect their home rule and, and, and what they govern within Leon County. So I, I would, I, I can't, I can't vote for the motion on the floor because I don't want to put, I don't want, I don't want staff to have, dedicate their time to this without having some city buy-in. But what I can do is I could, I could, I can support us sending a letter over to the city or requesting a workshop with the city to talk about Pensacola Street and the things that are happening and the plans that are made and, and we all give our input and walk away from that table with actions that can be taken at the city level, at the county level to deal with the issues that are going on Pensacola Street. So I, I can't accept, I can't, I cannot support the amendment on the floor to look at this committee, but I can support an amendment to, to send a request to workshop with the city on this and then as a result of that, evaluate the idea of having a committee for Pensacola, on Pensacola Street for this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Minor?
Point of information?
Uh, go ahead.
Would the committee propose a representative, we would be inviting a representative from the city, am I understanding?
Ideally.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would obviously include a representative from the city, which I
Mr. Minor?
Be the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, Commissioner Caban, I totally understand the frustration. I've been there with you as well. I mean, I think in September of last year, when you first, when you started talking about this, I, I even told you then, Pensacola Street does need some help, you know, definitely we need to, we need to work together as a community to address some of the problems there. I understand the motion, I understand the spirit of the motion. I think what Commissioner Maddox is talking about rings true with me because, for the reasons that he stated, I understand, you know, your desire to have that, that committee there. And I think you could come up with a lot of good ideas. The, the people that you're talking about representing on that committee, I think, would, would be the right people. But as Commissioner Maddox says, I, I don't think that we can put something together with a plan, but there's no, I'm not sure we could get people to act upon it. I think what Commissioner Maddox is talking about is the right way to go because that, that minimizes staff time on an issue that is deserving of all of our time, but it basically makes it most effective, right? And from that workshop, I think we can then decide where we need to go with the city there because I, I don't see us being able to make any actionable decisions without the city's key involvement. So I, I, I think I, I totally, I feel bad saying this, but I, I don't think I can support your, your amendment for the reasons that Commissioner Maddox has stated. I, I think Commissioner Maddox is ringing true on this piece. I will support, Commissioner Caban, if you decide to adopt what Commissioner Maddox is saying, I would support that enthusiastically. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Proctor, you want to go ahead?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Try to wrap it up.
I know that we all, we, we all feel Commissioner Caban's point in it's not the substance, it's the procedure of which these commissioners were suggesting, Commissioner Caban. And your passion and work and anybody that could do the work you've done and could get buckies to come by here, Tallahassee, I know you know how to negotiate and talk to people and win people. And our experience is built over time with our need to approach the city or for them to feel that we've said, please, oh, please, oh, please, great city fathers and mothers, let us together. Otherwise they may, you know. So we're there and not unstacking the substance, but just adding a, a procedural component that we first weigh in with the city pending their yea or nay, mithis and nay, we go forward with what we got. But extending the, that olive branch or whatever it is, is the first thing. There's no doubt, and I look at Ms. Shonda Knight, there's no doubt that, and I'm pondering and just not to put you on the spot, Shonda, but the, whether the sheriffs, I don't know if you want to say we went soft, stopped enforcing some of the problems there because the sheriff knew that Pensacola Street is pretty much an outdoor insane asylum. It's just an outdoor version. And arresting a bunch of people with mental health issues, they had tried the social, social work outreach methodology. But if we've gone so soft there, that what is resulting is murder deriving from that area, Commissioner Caban. And if murder is what's coming out of the outdoor insane asylum, then I don't think the city would sit idly by in a grief of Florida State students, TSC students, and I don't see the city having a blind eye to a corridor that's infested with hell. So let's, if you would, you know, kindly receive the procedural directions incorporated. I think we are there.
Go ahead.
I'm going to amend my motion. I see, I see where the board's going on this. What I'm going to do is this, I'm going to follow Commissioner Maddox's guidance and I'm going to amend my motion to invite the city to a joint Pensacola Street corridor workshop. If the workshop doesn't get any progress, I will be coming back to our board with, with a change of plan, right? Is that fair?
That's fair. And it does not eliminate our desire to lift it under the South Side Action Plan as an ongoing focal point.
And then with this, I just ask the spirit of this, if we could have a sense of urgency, you know, obviously we're work, we're working with multiple, multiple government agencies, but you know, I am fearful for this part of our community. Since we last talked about this, there's been three shootings. So I appreciate everyone's support and feedback. And Mr. Chair, I'll leave it with you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have one other point, not germane to what we've raised, and I know you're bringing this in for a landing. And before we do so
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I dare not bring this up already, but looking at the summary of the action plan, we've got about 15, 16 pages of things that are, we, Amendment one, page 38 of 77, all of that, all the way up to page 51. There is nothing here on these plans of the electric projects or the Leon County Public Works projects, which include some lights on Crawfville Road from Tillman's Funeral Home down to Capital Circle. And I continue to ponder, is that inside the urban service area? And what do it take for us to get some lights on a Parkway Light Road, four lane, and there's no lights? And I've, I've been wondering that for a whole lot of months and it's not in these 15 pages of projects.
Commissioner, that project is underway and we actually addressed that in the, the last item that came. So I didn't reiterate it in here, but it's in the previous, the status update that was previously provided on the South Side Action Plan. So that project is very much underway.
Okay. I'd love to see something that say next time, something underway. A lot of these say active. You've got words that say completed. I'm willing to work with underway, but just not to be included gives me pause. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a wonderful meeting, commissioners. Thank you all. Chairman, you've been great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Proctor and a second by Commissioner Caban for the three recommended actions with the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you, commissioners, for a productive couple of hours. And again, shout out to Commissioner Cummings, who, man, we are missing her touch today, aren't we? Just nothing but dudes up here. We're missing our queen. So Commissioner Cummings, hope your hamstring gets better. And thank you to county administrator and county attorney and to our, our fabulous planning staff for putting this all together for us. We are adjourned.
But mostly the response has been positive.
But mostly the response has been positive. And I must say that the most positive response to the piece has been this event right here, that Dr. Stringer saw the piece and in a stroke of fearless leadership.